It's just strong of seven o'clock. It is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen, November ninth, two thousand and fifteen. All select men are present. Our one select woman regrettably informed me earlier today that she would be unable to make the meeting this evening. We will start this evening with the pledge of allegiance, so if you'd all join me. And I'll ask Selectman Samagli to start us in view of it being Veterans Day week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We have Treasury Warrants eighteen, eighteen A, nineteen and nineteen A. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous? We do have two sets of minutes, I believe, maybe three. Three sets of minutes, forgive me, to approve. We can take them on batch or individually, however you guys would like to handle it.
I'm trying to remember what we typically do here. I'm happy enough to make a motion to approve at a table because Judy's not here. I can't remember how we've been doing it recently.
That's a valid observation.
I move to table?
Second.
Motion to table the vote on these minutes has been made and seconded. All in favor of that? I would agree. Unanimous? We'll take that up as at our next meeting. We do have two appointments scheduled, and I do see Mr. Martinello is here. Do you mind being cranked up on the schedule, Mr. Martinello? That's great. So our seven-ten appointment, which we will take up now, is with Mr. Joseph Martinello from Weir One Wilmington, to talk to us about the two thousand and sixteen run for Wilmington, Walk for Kim Forte. Hi, Joe, how are you?
Great. How's everyone doing?
Real good, thanks. Good evening.
Back here again. Before I even get into the two thousand and sixteen walk, I'll give you a little recap of the two thousand and fifteen walk and run. So we had over five hundred walkers, runners, this past year. We continue to keep the level above the five hundred, two years now in a row, which is great. It's a continued event. We just hit our fifth year this past year, so it's great to bring the community together that one day for multiple reasons. One for the town and one to remember Kim Forte. Of the funds we've raised, we raised over ten thousand dollars with the road race. Two thousand goes right back into nonprofits in Wilmington. So with our registration fee, we give a portion of that back to nonprofits. So over forty-five nonprofits benefited from the race itself. So it's not all going to the Weir One Wilmington nonprofit. It's going to other nonprofits in Wilmington as well. And through our nonprofit, we help out other nonprofits as well as the citizens of Wilmington through various services that we offer. Many nonprofits approach us throughout the year with activities that they're running, so we'll pull together baskets for their fundraising opportunities that they're running for their particular nonprofits. In town, we give back to the nurses on an annual basis. We give them care packages at the start of the school year. In addition to that, the funds that we raise through our nonprofit goes to help out through food pantry initiatives as well during the holidays. There's a lot of programs that are giving back into the community itself, so we help donate towards that. We also run drives ourselves that go back into the system itself. We do things around all different parts of the year, not just tied to holidays. So we're mindful that some families are in need as we head into the summer months with protection from the sun and other needs as well. So we're there to help out families during those times of the year as well. We have our own emergency assistance program for families in need as well. So I know that people have heard of WOW. They know that we volunteer, but they don't necessarily hear some of the things we do back into the community. I wanted to make sure I gave you guys a, you know, brief overview of some of the different things that we're doing. And we're always looking for different initiatives and services that we can offer out into the community as well.
Thank you.
So that's just a recap of where some of the funds go to, looking for support with our two thousand and sixteen walk, and that's on, we're hoping for April twenty-fourth. So it'll be the same date that we've run it the last several years. It ends up being the Sunday following Patriots' Day. So looking to keep it the same as we've done in years past. In addition to that, we're also looking for support with our upcoming fundraiser, the Festival of Trees, to be able to promote that on the common, the week of the actual event itself. And the festival will be held again on the December fourth and fifth at Villanova Hall, and it'll be run from nine a.m. to nine p.m. on Saturday, and then nine a.m. to three p.m. on Sunday.
Thank you. So I guess we'll take those two things up separately or vote on them separately. Jeff, are there recommendations or any conflicts that you're aware of?
No conflicts, no.
So if there's questions or concerns or otherwise, we certainly can open it up for conversation or questions to Joe, or we can take up a vote on the two thousand and sixteen walk on April twenty-fourth. We'll focus on that first, if that's all right.
Well, before we take that up, I just want to quickly thank you and the organization for the work that you do. And I think that it's great that we hear a reminder about some of the things that the organization does, but none of them are a real surprise, I think, to us when we hear about the work that you're doing. And there's so many, you know, wonderful groups in town that do that kind of work. I know that this group has kind of found a niche in supplementing other volunteer organizations. And it's great that we have the opportunity to be supportive of you.
Indeed.
Wow. No. I agree with everything Mike said. You know, you try to explain to people what Wilmington is all about, and again, you're just another example, your organization and all the other organizations, of what we're able to accomplish when we all put our hearts together, and you guys are just another example of that. Thank you.
Yeah, here, here. I guess I'll go in line. I guess, want to echo the sentiment that while has become, I guess probably it was from the early onset, but it was a little confusing with all of the other nonprofits, that the notion was that WOW was going to supplement or be in addition to or reinforce the existing nonprofit organizations that were out there and not replace them. And that was really made very clear from its early days, and you've just made it very clear that that has remained the mission and has been remarkably successful. So thank you for the work that you and so many people that are, you know, that you represent here tonight do the hard work of going out and getting the funds and getting the donations and organizing these events. So kudos to you and keep up the good work. We're very glad that you're a part of our community and helping those that benefit from it. So, Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I know it's all been said. Once again, thanks. We appreciate everything that you folks do, and it really means a lot to the community. And it's all been said. Mr. Newhouse said it earlier, and thank you.
So that said, I would accept a motion to approve the use of the town streets for the walk on April twenty-fourth.
So moved.
I'm sorry, we have a...
Just want to confirm that it is going to be the same route as in previous years?
Same route as in previous years.
Yes.
Is it a five K?
It's a five K, start at the common and end at the common. Goes down Wildwood Street onto Woburn, onto Federal, back onto sixty-two, and back to the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, I'm sorry, I think there was, was there a motion made?
For moved.
It has been made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor? Unanimous for the five K walk on April twenty-fourth? I'd take the same conversation for the, do we have to take a vote or is it permission, I guess generally, for the placement of, you want signage on and around the common for the Festival of Trees?
Correct.
Have we voted for that?
Yes, I would, yes.
It is, okay. So I would accept a motion there.
So moved. Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous again. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you on behalf of the board. Thank you on behalf of our four hundred volunteers. Really appreciate your support.
Good luck. We'll see you next at the festival. We're still waiting for someone who will be coming to join, Mr. West, to represent or to discuss the Toys for Tots program. So I think it probably is prudent for us to jump into communications, Mr. Hall.
Sure. The first item on the communications is correspondence from the town clerk, Sharon George, just confirming the appointment of a new member to the Finance Committee, Mr. Kevin Stokes. She writes, "It is my pleasure to inform you that you have been appointed by the appointing authority that consists of the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Chairperson of the Finance Committee, and the Town Moderator to the Finance Committee for a three-year term. They'll expire in two thousand and eighteen. You'll need to come into the town clerk's office so you may be sworn in to the faithful performance of your duty. I'm enclosing the open meeting law and summary of conflict of interest. Please sign the last page of each document to return to my office. Members of all boards and committees must also take the online state ethics training. The website is on the information page I've enclosed. Once you have finished with the training, you will print a certificate. I'll also need a copy of the certificate scanned to me. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me."
If I may at that point, just briefly, I want to interject to certainly thank Mr. Stokes for submitting his letter of interest to the Appointing Committee. There were, we were, it was an embarrassment of riches. We were very, very, I was very delighted, and I think I speak for the other members of the Appointing Committee, that of, we had five people that submitted their interest resumes or applications, and all of them individually were remarkably well-qualified, and any one of them would have been a wonderful addition to the Finance Committee. So I want to thank those individuals publicly. We already thanked them privately, and appropriate communications have gone out to that effect. But Mr. Stokes was unanimously selected because, well, for a number of reasons, but most, at least in my opinion, he sits as the Chief Information Officer for the town of Brookline, and in that role certainly has a remarkable knowledge and understanding of information technology, obviously, but also on the municipal budgeting process on very large budgets and working with, within the municipal sort of system, among other things. And so that sort of elevated Mr. Stokes slightly above the other very remarkable candidates. So again, congratulations to Mr. Stokes, but also thank you sincerely to all of the candidates who put their names in, and it's my sincere hope that those candidates will find other places within the community to volunteer their services. We'd love to put them to work. So I do, are we prepared, Mr. West? No, we are. Okay, so if it's okay, we'll check off that first communication, and we'll invite our seven o'clock appointment, Mr. Frank West, representing the Toys for Tots program, to join us on the left side.
Hi, good evening, gentlemen. Just wanted to, again, you know, this is our nineteenth year involved with the Toys for Tots program with the Marine Corps. But first and foremost, I'd like to introduce, well, my son, actually Frank West Jr. is in the audience. He's been helping us the seventeen out of the nineteen years we've been doing the program. And I'd like to also introduce S. Sergeant John Tipton, who's the coordinator for Middlesex and Essex County. He has actually an award he'd like to present to Michael, the chairman. And I think he has some words he would like to talk about the program as well.
Good evening, S. Sergeant. Thanks for being here.
Evening, sir. Evening, gentlemen. This is my second year as coordinator for the Toys for Tots for Devens. As Mr. West explained, I represent both Middlesex and Essex County. We had a successful year last year, and we're looking like we're going to have another one this year. Last year, we collected over ninety-two thousand toys, supported fifty-nine-point-something children, thousand children, and issued out sixty-two thousand toys. That's all from the local support of Middlesex and Essex County, the towns they're in, and we were able to provide the less fortunate with a good Christmas. So we appreciate all the help we get from the local communities.
Thank you, sir.
I think you want to...
Sure, yeah, indeed.
So, the United States Marine Corps Reserve Commander's Award. The U.S. Marine Corps Reserve is proud to recognize the town of Wilmington for the outstanding support of the two thousand and fifteen Marines Toys for Tots program. Their generous contributions have enabled the Marine Corps to bring the joy of Christmas and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children. Signed, John F. Kelly, Lieutenant General, USMC Commander, Marine Corps Force Reserves. Also coordinator, John Tipton, U.S. Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots Program. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks, boys.
Basically, what I also wanted to do was say that, you know, around town, both in Wilmington and Tewksbury, for my family's efforts and some volunteers that we have, but also around the state and around the nation, you'll start seeing posters like this looking around toy collection boxes. And, you know, it just gives, just, you know, like in our instance, we'd like to thank certainly Jeff Hall for allowing a toy box here at Town Hall. You'll see toy boxes at several of the town buildings around town, some of the schools, and a lot of the local businesses. You know, for anyone that needs toys, certainly, you know, there's certainly avenues to get toys as well as to donate. So, you know, there's a website, it's ToysForTotsMA.
Correct.
So that they can get, you know, so local people, including people here in Wilmington that, you know, that want to brighten up their holidays can certainly get, you know, toys from the Marine Corps. So I didn't know if anyone had any questions. Happy to, between the two of us, answer anything that we'd like to...
Certainly, yeah, thanks. We'll open it up to questions, Mr. McCoy. I'll start down there, if that's all right.
I really don't have any questions. I know it's a tradition. You've been coming here every year, Frank, and I know everybody wants to thank you. You've done a great job, you and your family and your son out there. And I want to thank you for all the service you've done to the community. And it's kind of nice when somebody not as fortunate as others wake up in the morning and have a little toy there, or they can get a meal. And obviously, what we talked about, it's volunteerism at its best, and it's really nice when you can give a helping hand to somebody else who's in tough need, and hopefully someday they're going to be able to help somebody else. And the tradition goes on and on and on and on. So it's a great country and it's a great community we live in. And once again, thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
I'll go right in line, I guess. You know, thank you, Frank, for bringing this to our attention always, every year. It appropriately is on the radar screen and in our attention during the holidays, but if I'm not mistaken, Toys for Tots continues its efforts and its work throughout the year when there are unfortunate situations or circumstances where someone needs their services. And so those folks that might find themselves in need could reach out to Toys for Tots at any time throughout the year. Is that a safe thing to say?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We normally keep an inventory on stock throughout the year just for events like that. All they need to do is contact the foundation. The foundation will filter that down to the local area, and we'll do our best to provide something for the family.
Thank you again. And certainly Wilmington, the town of Wilmington, is delighted to play whatever small role we can to bring this message to the community and be a conduit for folks to come and be generous and hopefully support the cause. So thanks very much for being here again. Mrs. Smith?
No, it's all been said, but I do have one question. ToysforTotsMA.gov.
If you go to, if you Google Toys for Tots on the computer, click on that first website, it will take you to the foundation's overall website. There, the family can navigate that, request a toy or donate a toy. It'll break it down further, state and then county, and then the individual will be directed directly to my website. I don't remember what it's off the top of my head, but if they navigate through that way, they'll be able to find us. And on that home screen is everything anyone needs to know as far as trying to collect a toy or donate a toy, a monetary donation, anything like that is laid out on that page.
Outstanding. Thank you.
It's actually a toy, I get it on the poster here, it says ToysForTots.org.
Thanks.
I think it's all been said. Just one little practical thing that I know you've mentioned in the past, how the toys should be packaged, unwrapped, correct?
Always unwrapped, yeah.
Unwrapped, in the boxes, new toys. Right. Just reiterate what's already been said. Thank you for your time and your service, and it's great to see the family effort that goes on every year as well. So, thank you.
Well, it's our, it's an honor for me to assist the Marines and certainly, you know, in some small way here and help out the local community. But, you know, like I always say, I appreciate the kind words said about, you know, my family, but, you know, like I've said in the past, we put out empty boxes, and by some miracle, they get filled, and we take the full boxes and give them to the Marines to distribute. So, and if people, you know, and probably the bottom line is, is that no matter what the charity, be it Toys for Tots or whatever the charity is, you know, it just, it does show the spirit of giving here in the local community that, you know, somebody helping somebody else, I think, is a great thing. So it's, you know, whatever charity people choose to support, you know, certainly, you know, I think is very well appreciated. And, oh, one last thing is, is that we'll be collecting probably through the twelfth of December, and then I'll probably have one or two, market basket in Wilmington will have a box for a few more days after that. So if anybody sees, hey, where'd all the boxes go? I think a market basket, because they're open early and stay late, and everybody kind of knows where they are.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a great holiday.
Thanks, S. Sergeant. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frankie. 'Tis the season.
Unfortunately, you can't come for a call quick.
Right. Continuing on with communications, I believe we're at bullet number two now.
Yes, there's a memorandum from me to the board with regard to correspondence that we received late on Friday. This is from the EPA. It's correspondence that was actually directed to the Surface Transportation Board. And if you recall, there was a comfort letter issued by EPA back some months ago with regard to an opinion on the New England Transrail proposal. Since then, there's been certainly some questions, concerns raised by the town, also the group known as Work. We went in and met with representatives from EPA a few months ago. Essentially, the letter that is, has been sent to the Surface Transportation Board makes a number of points. It notes that previous correspondence dated nine-nine, two thousand and ten, and nine-twelve, two thousand and eleven requested that the Surface Transportation Board defer any environmental review process regarding the NET proposal until they had an opportunity, EPA, that is, in working with Olin, to complete the remedial investigation feasibility study with regard to soil sediment and surface water, potential contamination, and the effects on health and the ecology. They also recommended that the STB conduct an environmental impact review as opposed to an environmental assessment, which is a more extensive review and has a greater level of public involvement. The, they note that the NET submitted a status report to the Surface Transportation Board on August eighteenth of two thousand and fifteen requesting that the STB lift the deferral on consideration of the project that NET was seeking. EPA notes that during the period from two thousand and ten to eleven, since that time, the remedial investigation of soil sediment and water at the site was ongoing at that time. Chemicals were identified, but there was no, at that point, no information regarding the health risks or ecological assessment. They've also noted that data was collected, has been collected since that time indicates that most of the areas of contamination are within three principal areas, one being this five-acre site, which is referenced as a contamination area. It's contained within a slurry wall and a temporary cap. They also describe in their correspondence their responsibilities under the CIRCLA regulations for promoting development and redevelopment of areas of contamination, even noting that in some instances that may happen prior to issuance of a record of decision. They specifically note that there are particular areas on the Olin site that are not suitable for development, namely this contaminated, contaminant area that's within the slurry wall, and then the so-called Plant B, an additional area, which is a restricted area. EPA expects that their record of decision, which was what they were originally requesting STB to the point where they were looking for STB to defer their decision until the record of decision is expected to be issued in late two thousand and seventeen, and that this decision may have an impact on the development plans that NET ultimately has. The bottom line to this is basically that EPA, based upon the information that they have from NET at this point, does not believe there's any basis to defer or recommend a deferral to STB any further. So, you know, it's not certainly the news that we were looking for. We will be looking at what options may exist on the town's side to contest this. We'll be having some conversations with council. But at the end of the day, EPA is indicating that there's no basis from their perspective to further delay the process with STB.
So this whole document, which is robust, and I'll admit that I tried to get through most of it over the weekend but didn't finish, that this whole entire package is in hands of council currently.
Yes.
Does, and so is GeoInsight is our...
They're our environmental consultant. They also have received it and will be, I'm looking to check in with them later in the week.
Okay. Anything from anybody else? No? Okay, thank you.
We have correspondence from Shelley Newhouse, Health Director. You recall at the last meeting, there was some brief discussion about House Bill sixteen fifty-six relative to housing court. The board had asked that the applicable departments that deal with issues that might be in the venue of a housing court be asked to offer an opinion. Ms. Newhouse indicates that she is supportive of the housing court legislation in part because, in her opinion, it would expedite the ability to address violations of state sanitary code, which is the code that she enforces, and believes that the judges that are typically involved in these housing courts are more familiar with sanitary and building code issues and are more likely to be able to render decisions. I'm expecting to get an opinion from the building inspector as well.
So, I'm sorry, Jeff, I was going to interrupt you there. I know you don't have a formal opinion from the building inspector, but so I also happened to notice that Representatives Misselli, as well as Representative Gordon, have endorsed this legislation going forward. So, you know, the question was, was to me, would there be benefit to this legislation to the town of Wilmington? Or was it just, you know, we've been asked to fill out or vote for these resolutions in the past, and I wasn't sure to what degree that that would have merit or would have, in fact, I think I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Newhouse, but Mr. Newhouse sort of asked, you know, is this going to benefit the town? Are we just, are we just being nice guys and supporting some of the other communities who've voted to put that in place? So, you know, we can continue to table this, and at some point perhaps if someone wants to bring it up for a vote to endorse or sign a resolution in support of this, we can certainly do that. Or we can leave it in the hands of our legislators who have already indicated that they support the legislation. And I guess I want to put it out to my colleagues here as to whether or not they see fit to continue with this or let it sort of run its course. Or nothing.
I think we just take the position of basically table it, right? I mean, do we throw support towards it where it's already going to be voted on? I mean, I don't have a problem either way. You know, I'm just saying, either way.
I don't feel, I mean, Ms. New, Shelley Newhouse is indicating that it would be beneficial from her perspective and the performance of her function in town and by... and by virtue of that, I would imagine that that would be beneficial to those people, residents of the town that she serves. But I don't know to what degree us voting on and taking a position on a resolution will have an impact on the overall vote being taken by the state legislature. So, like I said, unless there was someone that wanted to push this forward, we could presume that our legislators will continue the, the fight. And I think that's the vibe that I'm getting here. So, we will just leave it, let it lie, and if someone wants to take it up again at some future date, they certainly can.
Next, under correspondence is the notice regarding the tax classification hearing, a public hearing to provide an open forum for the discussion of local, local property tax policy with reference to classification. For fiscal year 2016, taxation purposes will be held at the Town Hall on Monday, November 23rd, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Interested taxpayers may present their views on the classification policy at the hearing or in writing to the Town Manager's Office until 4:30 PM on that date. Next, we have correspondence from Marilyn Hilliard. This is with regard to informing the board about the process that has been ongoing in terms of gathering comments about the, uh, this is the Charles, it's actually not the Charles River, but the Charles watershed, which is, there are essentially four watersheds in, in the state. The Charles being one of them, and includes the Ipswich River Basin, so that's why we're receiving it. When this correspondence was sent out earlier seeking comment, Paul Looney, the town engineer, and Valerie Gingrich, Planning and Conservation Director, did offer comments. They also attended the discovery meeting. I don't believe there's any further action that needs to be taken on our part at this point. We have correspondence, a memo from me concerning some communications I've had with a representative from Logan Communications. Logan was, Representative is interested in the prospect of locating a, an electronic billboard on Route 93 in Wilmington. It would be in the industrial way area, right on, or off to the side of Route 93. As I've indicated to this gentleman, Mr. John Pellring, I'm not particularly in favor of electronic billboards. It's really not something I believe, quite honestly, is in character for the town. But the, the program that they, he was proposing, or the offer, was that the town would receive a host payment of $100,000 a year. It would be a 50-year agreement with the, an increase in that payment of $5,000 each fifth year, and that also the, the town would have the ability to utilize the signboard for community service announcements, up to 10 hours a month on each board. So it's a board, you know, the board, southern, southern-facing board and northern-facing board. Again, certainly, you know, I'm not looking to turn down an offer for additional funds, but in the bigger picture, I think there's a lot of questions that are open on this issue. So, that is.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say.
Please.
Owning a business and being familiar with signs, 20, 20, 20 years ago, neon was a big thing. Things have dramatically changed with technology. If you remember the good old days, the North Reading Starlight, or in Tewksbury, the Womerset Drive, and you basically can run a movie on these things, and you can see it in the Woburn area, right off, near that granite place, the arena mobile, down by Montville Plaza. You're talking, this thing is mammoth. And I do agree with the manager, I don't think we need to sell ourselves on something like this. And, I mean, these things are amazing. I mean, owning the business, they came out, somebody on a small business, you could see something of that, but something like this, it's just huge, and they can just run video. And here we're talking about legislation, taking away, you know, the use of handheld cell phones. They don't want to, you know, because of danger. I mean, you drive by, you see that. You go up to the Salem Line, you see that big sign by W Web, I believe. I mean, this is huge, and I think it's a distraction. And I don't think we're in dire straits where we're going to need that money. And even if we did, I think that would, you talk about safety issues, you do take your eyes off that road when you take a look at that sign. Not saying that I do, but, you know, you take your eyes off the road.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Major mentioned the company, though, didn't it?
Yeah. There you go. You know, I, I think I share.
Touche.
The, the general gist of it, which is, it's really not in keeping with the character of who I think most of us think of what Wilmington is. I certainly share that observation as well. The reason I, it's in this, our packets for two reasons. One, A, because, you know, Jeff brought it to my attention, and as he and I were talking about it in preparation for the meeting, when there was discussion of there being a, a financial component, you know, where, where the town could potentially generate upwards of 100,000 a year or so, I felt it necessary to at least put this in front of you guys and Judy, and, and have a conversation if necessary. You know, if, if the sign was not visible to anybody within the, the town of Wilmington, and was only visible to the highway, eh, you know, but, you know, I, to, to Mr. McCoy's point, I don't think we're in dire needs. It's $100,000 over the, the course of a much larger budget. I think, in my personal opinion, it's giving up too much to get too little. And so I wouldn't be personally in favor of pursuing it aggressively, but I just, again, I felt it appropriate to put in front of your eyes and have your ability to voice your opinion on it if you, if you'd want it to. So, that's why it's in the packet today. I don't think we need to take action if there's, if there's no desire to do so.
I would just chime in and say that I agree with everything that the three of you have said, so.
Okay, very well. Move on and thank them for their interest, and thanks, but no thanks.
We have correspondence from Mount Grace Land Conservation Trust. They're sending out correspondence that appears to property owners that they've identified along the route of the proposed Kinder Morgan pipeline, and encouraging the communities, or the land property owners, to oppose the pipeline, in part by not agreeing to any kind of easements under the premise that if, if landowners do not agree to the easements, Kinder Morgan will be forced to perhaps pursue eminent domain. And it's their belief that, to the extent there is a significant number of eminent domain takings, it raises the threshold, so to speak, that FERC would require in terms of demonstrating that this project is necessary. So, there's no action required. We have correspondence from Verizon regarding some changes in programming. This is with regard to the Fios TV program. On or after November 16th, 2015, Universal Sports Network on Channel 804 will be removed from the channel lineup by the content provider. On or after December 15th, 2015, One World Sports will be removed from Channel 309, or will move from 309 to Channel 595. On or after January 31st, 2016, the In Sports HD will move from Channel 805 to Channel 596. Then on or after January 31st, 2016, Uplift TV will become enriched and will move from Channel 798 to Channel 659. And the subscribers will be so notified. We have correspondence from Xfinity. This is from Jane Lyman, the Senior, Senior Manager of Government Affairs. In keeping with our ongoing efforts to provide updates regarding our services, I am writing to inform you of some upcoming changes in our installation rates. On January 1st, 2016, due to changes in business costs, the following installation rates will change. There are a number of different installation rates here, and the one common element to all of them is that they are going up.
It doesn't go down, do it?
We also have correspondence from, this is Comcast as well. Timothy Murnane, Vice President of External Affairs, noting Comcast is pleased to announce it will continue to provide high-speed internet service to the town of Wilmington schools and your local library, free of charge again this year, continuing the company's longstanding commitment to communities we serve.
Some good news. The next item is a Board to Consider request from Dennis Costa to be appointed a constable. Jeff, I don't know if you want to expand on?
Yes, I would just note, he sent us correspondence in September indicating, "I'm interested in becoming a constable for the town of Wilmington. I'm a former Burlington Special Police Officer. I recently retired from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Banks after 20 years, where I held positions as bank examiner, regional field manager, and chief director of licensing of mortgage companies. Although I am a Burlington resident, I have family ties in Wilmington. My son Chuck and his family have resided in Wilmington for about 20 years and have been quite active in youth soccer and basketball." Below are a couple of references. I am sending a copy of this letter to Michael Shampoo, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. If you need additional information, please feel free to contact me." So he provides the references, a couple of references here. I have forwarded this to the police chief, Michael Begonis, and he writes, "Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department has determined there is no evidence to prevent the following individual from serving in the appointed position as constable to the town of Wilmington. Approval is recommended at this time. Dennis C. Otis III, Persing Circle, Burlington, Mass." Also received a note here from Sharon George. In reviewing Mr. Otis's packet, I recommend him to be a constable. If you have further questions, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Dennis C. Otis, a constable, as set forth in the request.
I can.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations and thank you to.
That would be the intent of my motion, would be with the restrictions based on the fact that he lives outside of town.
Duly noted. So we don't, we don't need to amend the vote. It was presumed to have that in it.
Three people.
That's been clarified.
Mr. Chair, if I could just note, under correspondence or items that were sent out, there was a notice sent from the schools regarding a program that is coming up on Tuesday, November 10th, tomorrow, Combating Underage Substance Abuse, Substance Use and Abuse Parents Education Workshop. This is taking place over at the Wilmington Middle School Auditorium. The speaker, Jamie Clufts, Prevention and Educational Coordinator for Middle Sex Partnership for Youth. The workshop will provide tools and strategies for parents on what to look for and how to talk to children about substance use and abuse. So in, in light of the current situation that we've been dealing with for some time now, not only in Wilmington, but across the state and across the country, I think it's important that people be aware of these opportunities to become more educated about how you can talk to your kids about substance use and abuse.
Thank you. I'll take some personal privilege here on this bullet, and, and I wanted to, I guess probably as in part of the public comment, not public comments, but committee reports, I was going to indicate or articulate how impressed I was, and frankly grateful for the very good attendance at the Drug Awareness Symposium that was held at St. Thomas a little, almost about two weeks ago now. It was, in my opinion, a lot of content there, pretty intense conversation, and certainly grateful to the tremendous turnout of residents that showed up. What I wanted to also specifically say this evening was that this Combating Underage Substance Abuse and Abuse Parent Education Workshop scheduled for tomorrow night is a different, different workshop. It's a different event. And, you know, I've been aware that there's been some dialogue online that the question was, well, if I went to the one at St. Thomas, do I have to go to this one? And, you know, is it the same content? Is it Part B? They're isolated in different events. And while the one at St. Thomas was a community forum, this one is really especially focused on and dedicated to parents, on educating parents in seeing, noticing the signs and identifying those signs of whether or not a kid is going down a, a dangerous path. And God forbid that, that child has gone down a dangerous path, and there are tools and tactics to help parents work through that. So, it's a little bit more focused and specific, and I would encourage folks that did attend a week and a half or so ago, if they feel like there's still value in learning more about this, this disease, or this epidemic, to continue to attend this and any other seminars that come up within the community. I'll be there, and I'm looking forward to learning, and I hope that we have a very good turnout. So, thank you, Mr. Hall, for bringing that to our attention. We are at a point now where we are at public comments. Do we have it? I see none. So, thank you. We'll go to new business and committee reports, and Mr. Newhouse, I guess, I suppose I'll start with you.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Just want to remind everybody that Wednesday is Veterans Day, and we have our ceremony on the common as we do every year. And I'm always proud of the turnout that we get every year. However, this year, it, it doesn't look like the weather's going to be the best. We still will be there. So, just remind everybody to bring their raincoats and their umbrellas, and come out and, and celebrate and show our support for our veterans, young and old, from Wilmington. Thank you.
You're here. We'll look forward to being there, and hopefully the town will show up. I'm sure they will. Mr. McCoy?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Under important dates, we have the, through November 28th, curbside collection of yard waste. On November 10th, as was previously noted, combating underage substance use and abuse. This is the parents workshop at the middle school auditorium at 7:00 PM. Also previously noted, Veterans Day is November 11th. Ceremony's on the town common at 11:00. Town offices are closed. On November 12th, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 12th, also registration deadline, recreation junior basketball, grades one and two. November 14th, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. On November 14th, Shawshin Elementary School Craft Fair, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. November 18th, brush drop-off, drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 21, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November 21, Senior Citizen Holiday Craft Fair, Bazell's Senior Center, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also, November 21, Shawshin Tech Craft Fair, 100 Cook Street, Bilreca, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. November 23, discussion regarding local property tax policy with reference to classification for fiscal 2016. The Board of Selectmen's meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. November 25, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 26, Thanksgiving Day, town offices closed. November 27, the Friday after the Thanksgiving holiday, town offices closed. Brush drop-off on the 28th, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And December 10th is the next facilities, or the first Facilities Master Plan Committee meeting. This will be the kickoff meeting.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Unless there's anything else, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, and good night.